...annual town meeting, which is scheduled for April the 28th. I'm Eva Marks, a member of the Hingham League Steering Committee, together with Kate Bowlen and Liza O'Reilly, who isn't here tonight. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that seeks to encourage the informed and active participation of citizens in government. We do this through voter education, promoting voter registration, and advocacy based on in-depth study of issues. Town meeting is Hingham's legislative body. We have open town meeting, which means that anyone registered to vote in Hingham is eligible to attend and vote. The League sponsors an annual review of the Hingham Town Meeting warrant to inform voters about upcoming issues and to prepare them for this opportunity to affect the affairs of our town. We also sponsor an annual Candidates Night in anticipation of the town election, which occurs on the Saturday after town meeting, or May 3rd of this year. Mark your calendars now for the League's Candidates Night here at Town Hall on Wednesday, April 9th, so we hope to see you there as well. At the 2011 Annual Town Meeting, Hingham voters approved an article brought by the League of Women Voters to have the Town Meeting warrant made available to the public 10 days after the mandated January 20th deadline for article submission. Those articles can be found on the Hingham Town website. I also encourage you to visit the Hingham League's website, where you can find the Citizens' Guide to Town Meeting, as well as abundant information about Hingham Town Government. And tonight, I am pleased to welcome Mary Power, Vice Chair of the Hingham Advisory Committee, who's going to give us an overview of how the Town Meeting warrant is developed, and what we can expect to be brought before the Town Meeting, as well as answer questions that her presentation might generate. We hope that this will help you attend Town Meeting on April the 28th as an informed voter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the League, both for sponsoring this event, and also for the article you brought forward a few years ago at Town Meeting, because that makes our life on the Advisory Committee a little bit easier. As you'll see tonight, we get a lot of very important business decided at Town Meeting, and both from the Advisory Committee's perspective and the perspective of the town. The more we can get information out there, and it's visible, people can engage in not only the Town Meeting process, but in the hearings. Kate and some others had asked that we prepare a few things. I'm gonna run through a few slides, more as a way to really kind of start the conversation. There are also a few questions that some of the League members have asked about, so try to address those, and certainly invite any questions. So what are we gonna talk about? I am a numbers person in my former life, so I'm gonna spend a couple minutes on the budget, because while it's only one article at Town Meeting, it represents $95 million in operating expenditures and capital. And that's an important part of our work. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the warrant article process and calendar, and I'll mention from the outset that the Advisory Committee has probably heard maybe 25% of the warrant articles so far, and certainly can speak to what's taken place in our room, but there are many articles that still haven't come before us. So in terms of offering an advisory opinion, we will be holding hearings on some of these articles over the next few weeks, and we would certainly invite folks to attend our meetings. I'll give you a little bit of a highlight of some of the decisions that this year's Town Meeting is going to make, is going to be making, and then any questions. Speaking about the budget, the Advisory Committee has three budget responsibilities: the Town Budget, so that's the budget for the Police Department, the Fire Department, Public Works, the Library, the Town Clerk; the Education Budget, and Capital Outlay. So basically, any asset that costs over $10,000 is part of our Capital Outlay Plan. How do we do that? We try to understand departmental priorities and the resulting service levels. If Chief Perino puts forth a request for a couple additional officers, we ask questions to understand: is this driven by increased call volume? Is this driven by service needs? We try to evaluate significant budget changes. And I would remind folks that in 2008 and 2009, Hingham, like many communities, had to make a lot of very difficult financial choices, just because of the global and the national economic crisis. And as we've often said in the Advisory Committee, it's a whole lot easier to take away services than to add them back. And what we're seeing this year, similar to the past few years, is that we are making efforts where it makes sense to restore some lost services. A good example was that last year's Town Meeting approved funding to restore two Assistant Principals in our elementary schools. For several years, we had elementary school Assistant Principals covering two buildings, or roughly 1,000 students per person. So again, through the generosity of the town, we were able to restore those positions. As we're looking at the budget, we try to look at the impact for the upcoming year, but we also are mindful of what's gonna take place going forward. And what you see down at the bottom is a quote from our Advisory Committee handbook, which is located on the Town website. Ideally, our budget recommendations reflect a consensus. We try to balance affordable cost with acceptable service levels, and we try to have consensus between the Advisory Committee, the originating group, and the Board of Selectmen. Ultimately, the budget decisions, all $95 million of them, do rest with Town Meeting. As we look at budgets, we look at departmental budget trends, service levels, and our policy. And I'm gonna spend a minute on this, only because it was a question that was brought forward in advance. The Advisory Committee established, one of our responsibilities is to establish a townwide financial policy. According to our handbook, every three years, that policy should be reviewed. This year was the third year. And a subcommittee consisting of four or five advisory members looked at our financial policy, to see if there were any updates that were, that should be made. And our policy contains three financial metrics that we use to sort of gauge the health of the town. And I wanted to spend a minute explaining those, and tell you where we are. It's our sense that our financial health has improved quite a bit over the last few years, but there are a couple areas of concern. If we start out with what's called unassigned fund balance, the better way to think about that is, that's our town's rainy day fund. That's what we use when we have a winter like this one, where our snow removal costs are much higher than budget. And our rainy day fund is intended to, you know, insulate us from things. It's a very important consideration for our rating agencies. And the measure that municipalities use is what percentage is it of your total expenses? It's kind of similar to the rule of thumb that says you should have six months of household expenses in your rainy day fund. When we set this target, we actually consult with our financial advisor, because this is something the rating agencies look at. In 2008, our fund balance was 8.9% of our expenses, and that was one of the reasons why the rating agencies put us on watch. And they said, we asked them, we said, you know, what do we need to do to get that watch removed? And one of the things they said is, you need to, you really need to beef up your fund balance. At the time, we set a target of between 14 and 18%. Again, driven by the rating agencies, who said 14 is probably the bare minimum, but we'd ideally like to have you at 20, because that's where your peer communities are. So this year, the unassigned fund balance target was modified to 16 to 20%, and as of the end of the fiscal year, we're at 17.1%. So we're right in that nice range, but it is something to keep an eye on. One policy that we have as an Advisory Committee is that our rainy day fund is intended to cover unexpected events, and we don't want to use it to fund everyday operating expenses, and we don't want to use it to fund capital. Capital outlay, it's trucks, it's buildings. We have a target that we would spend between 2% and 5% on capital every year. That translates to about $2 million. Over the past five years, our capital spending in the town, I believe, has averaged a little bit over $1 million. One year, it was $62,000. And so we have some catch-up work to do in capital. Right now, our fiscal year 15, our Town Administrator is recommending capital spending of $2 million, which is 3% of our operating expenses. The Advisory Committee heard the Capital Outlay report the other night. We received the recommendation. We're actually voting that, as well as all of our operating budgets, next Thursday. The final one is debt service, and there was a question about debt service. There are two important numbers to remember with debt for the town. There's our debt threshold, which is how much we are able to borrow, and there's our debt service, which is how much we do borrow. The way I tend to think about it is, sometimes when you apply to get a credit card, you get a credit card in the mail, and it gives you some crazy balance. And you say, well, I may have a big balance on this credit card, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna spend that much. Our debt threshold is a function of the assets in the town, and it's a, it's a crazy big number, like a couple hundred million dollars. We never would want to borrow that much money. But what we do have is a debt service policy that says at any time, we only want our debt payments to be between about 5% and 7.5% of our expenses, because as the debt creeps up, our ability to fund operating expenses and capital is a little bit compromised. As you can see right now, we're at about 10.2%. If you were to look at this number historically in Hingham, back over the last 40 years, you will see that there are a lot of peaks and valleys. And that's because major town infrastructure projects come along every once in a while. And so, for example, if you think about the recent infrastructure projects with our school department, we built East School, we are finishing building a middle school. So that's one reason why our debt service is a little higher. We carry a debt schedule that shows that that is expected to trend downward over time, but it does give us pause when we get warrant articles that have to do with borrowing. There's one warrant article this year for two new fire trucks, costing $1.2 million. And as we looked at that the other night, we looked at that debt service number of 10.2% and said, if we, if we adopt this, this is going to actually increase our debt service. In making that decision, we look at a few things. We look at trends over time. We also, when thinking about financing something like a fire truck, think about the useful life of the asset. And for example, if we were to pay for a fire truck in cash, it would cost about $600,000. If we paid for it in cash today, we're essentially putting the burden of that cost on the current taxpayer base, when we're putting an asset in service for 20 years. So those who are proponents of borrowing would say that borrowing allows us to spread the cost of that asset over its useful life, so taxpayers who move to Hingham in five years would be contributing towards covering that cost. There are others who say that our debt service number is a little high, and we shouldn't do that. There's one other consideration that I'd mention with debt, and that is the interest rates. And as my dad used to say, I don't care how low interest rates are, zero is better than any rate you have. But it is worth noting that right now, Hingham is able to borrow short-term, because of our credit rating, at .2%. So that's not 2%, that's .2%. Our long-term rate right now is about 2%. And right now, all of the debt we have on our books, with the exception of the middle school, is all locked in at that 2% rate. As the middle school comes online, and the town looks at borrowing, we're going to have a choice. Do we borrow for a year at .2%? Or do we lock in at 2%? And those are decisions that the Town Administrator, in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee, considers. The process for a warrant article. Warrant articles can be generated from the Board of Selectmen, any of our town boards, town committees, as well as citizen petitions. A citizen petition requires the signature of 10 registered voters in order to come to Town Meeting. We have a couple deadlines. Street acceptances are actually due in July 1st of the previous year. Zoning articles are due on December 1st, and everything else is due on January 20th. The Town Clerk receives the warrant articles, they go to our Assistant Town Administrator, and at that point, both the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee engage in hearings. It's our practice and custom to have the Board of Selectmen hear something first. Their point of view often informs our decision. As we are working on warrant articles, all warrant articles are reviewed by our Town Council to make sure they're in good legal standing, and our Town Moderator also reviews, and oftentimes offers opinions on procedural matters with warrant articles. And the warrant by law is required to be received by citizens seven days before the Town Meeting. So this is the time of year when we know we have a deadline, because Town Meeting is always the 4th Monday in April. So we can't be late. We take that obligation very seriously, because we understand, as the League does, that the sooner information can be put into voters' hands, the more Town Meeting can make informed decisions. So as you can see here, we actually begin our work in July, and really go through March. I would say this is kind of peak season. And in terms of the articles, this is just a graph that shows you the number of articles that we have from year to year. As high as about 62, as low as about 48. You'll notice in 2013 and 14, some white bars. For the first time last year, all of our Community Preservation Committee articles, or CPC, are bundled into one article. But for example, this year, that's 14 projects. So while we might say, gee, that bar's a little bit lower this year, and those who are involved in community preservation would know, that each of those projects is of great complexity, has been the result of a lot of thoughtful work, and actually tomorrow night, the Advisory Committee will be holding a hearing on those 14 CPC projects. This is just a pie chart of how the warrant articles break out by type. We have something called perennial articles, which are articles that we hear every year: the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund, the reports of the town committees, the salaries of town officers. If you notice, the parts of the pie chart that are in green are budget and other financial items. Our budget requires a majority vote. If we are borrowing for a financial article, that requires a 2/3 vote of Town Meeting. So the threshold is a little higher for borrowing, because borrowing has some serious implications. We have some infrastructure articles, articles to look at Town Hall, feasibility of the activity here in Town Hall. If you come here often, you sometimes notice it's very difficult to park, because there's a lot of activity. We have departments that are expanding, most notably the Senior Center. And so one of the things we want to take a look at from an infrastructure perspective is how to accommodate and meet the needs of all these very important departments, and what does that mean for town facilities? We have our CPC, we have some zoning changes to the zoning bylaw. This year, there are a couple of cleanup articles for zoning. We have a zoning article that relates to the recent medical marijuana that was passed by the state, that basically adopts some regulations, so that Hingham can restrict the location, should a, should a medical marijuana dispensary be considered in town. We have a few easements. And then in purple, we have a bunch of other articles that fall into different categories. Here are some of the decisions that this year's Town Meeting will make. As I mentioned, adopting the budget's about $95 million. The meals tax, and there was a question from the League about why we're transferring funds in and out of reserve funds. If you look on our warrant summary, we have three warrant articles where we're transferring money. So it kind of seems money's going in and out of different places. So here's, here's what happens with the transfers. Every year, Hingham has to balance its budget. We're not like the federal government, we're like our households. At the end, there has to be enough money to pay all the bills. And there are times, for example, this winter, where we have, our snow and ice budget has been really blown out because of the tough winter. The Advisory Committee has a $500,000 reserve during the year that allows us to fund unforeseen items. In some years, that 500 isn't enough. For example, in a year with heavy winter. So we have an article to transfer funds to the reserve fund, which is basically to take money out of our rainy day account, and put it into our reserve account, so we can balance the books at the end of the year. This is typically an article that we, we put in place, but there are many years when we don't need it. For example, last year, the Advisory Committee had a reserve fund of $500,000, and close to 400 was returned to the town. So this is an article that we put in place if we need it, and it's typically unforeseen expenses. There are two other articles, and right now, they're called J and K. And this is money that relates to the meals tax. I believe it was four years ago, Hingham Town Meeting adopted the meals tax. And this was a tool given to us by the state to help communities as an alternate revenue source. We collect, I think it's .75% of every meal served in Hingham, and when, in a restaurant. And when this was first brought to the Advisory Committee, the state said, based on previous collections, we think this is worth about $225,000 to you every year. Well, it's actually about $600,000 a year. And that has a lot to do with a lot of restaurants and eating establishments that have opened in the shipyard, over in Derby Street, on the 3A corridor. And when we adopted the meals tax, it was very important, there was an important consideration, and a commitment made to Town Meeting that said, we're not gonna use this meals tax to fund our everyday expenses. We're gonna use this meals tax for capital items, so that we don't have to borrow as much money, and we can maybe alleviate the tax burden on our citizens. The way the meals tax works is that every quarter, we receive a payment from the state. The money comes into our rainy day fund. Every year at Town Meeting, Town Meeting has to adopt an article to take it out of our rainy day fund, and put it into the meals tax stabilization fund. So it accumulates over in our rainy day fund, and we don't touch it, but we have to basically move it from one account to another. And every year, that's a Town Meeting decision. So Town Meeting could decide in one year, we don't want to put it there, we want to put it somewhere else. I think it's unlikely the Advisory Committee would support that, but anyway, so we move it in. If you want to take money out of that fund, there's another article where you have to take it out. So this gives Town Meeting the chance to weigh in on every part of the decision. For example, last year, there was an article to take several hundred thousand dollars out of that meals tax account, and use it to pay some of, to pay some of the debt from the middle school. And the idea was, let's try to lessen the burden to the taxpayer when the middle school hits, which is going to be, I believe, the next cycle of tax bills will have the middle school debt. I think it's also worth noting with the middle school, that this was a 57, I think, $57.4 million project. And there has been a concerted effort by a lot of parties to try to manage the taxpayer impact. It starts with our school committee and our school building committee, who is bringing this project in a couple million dollars under budget. And you know, when you, when you look in the newspaper at projects that, you know, in the news outside Hingham, sometimes you see the project was a big overrun. I mean, Big Dig's a good example. It is, it is the result of a lot of hard work and effort by our school committee, our school building committee. The school is going to cost less to build than Town Meeting approved, and that's a good thing. In addition, the fact that we can borrow at lower rates means that we're gonna have a lower interest cost, and that will be significant to the taxpayer. On top of that, by applying the meals tax revenue of $600,000 a year, we're able to, again, further reduce the impact. And I believe, if memory serves me right, the tax burden has been reduced by about 40%. So if you were expecting to see a $350 increase in your taxes for the middle school, you're gonna only see maybe about 200. But we also recognize that for many, that 200 is a lot of money. So that's the meals tax. Town Meeting's gonna be asked to appropriate $50,000 for a Town Hall facility study. There is an article to appropriate additional funds to consider the investigation of the water company. Article 19, in the 2012 Town Meeting, requested funding to investigate this. This article will be doing the same. Another article is to establish a trust fund for special education out of district tuition expenses. Liza O'Reilly, who's on the school committee, knows this very well, because she lives and works with it, but there are approximately 60 children whose educational needs cannot be met here in Hingham. They may have various educational challenges. For example, a student may be blind, a student may have some development issues where the option is to, for that child, to attend school out of district. The Hingham School Department is responsible for providing a free and appropriate education to every student, which means that if a student is required to go out of district, that that is our town responsibility. The town is responsible for tuition, the town is responsible for transportation. Out-of-district tuition costs can range from $25,000 a year to a quarter of a million dollars a year, not including transportation. And it is often difficult to predict those expenses. A working group comprised of representatives from the school department and the town is suggesting that we establish a trust fund, which would allow us to take any special education surplus dollars we have in one year, the Town Meeting's already appropriated, and put them in an account to use in future years, only for out-of-district tuitions, and only when they are unexpected. So this is a decision that Town Meeting will make. The last item here is, Town Meeting will be asked to commemorate Seaman Herbert L. Foss, who is one of two Hingham Medal of Honor recipients. And the Foss Naming Committee is advancing an article to name a portion of the waterfront for Mr. Foss, and to erect a structure that will not only commemorate his life, but have an educational aspect to it. This article is asking Town Meeting to approve the naming, and for Town Meeting to appropriate $40,000 in design funds, with the committee then working to secure private funding for the construction. Town Meeting's gonna be asked to purchase two fire pumpers to replace two assets that are over 20 years old. Town Meeting will be asked to actually renew an intermunicipal agreement for recycling. We received a question about that, and this is a voluntary association. It is an association of about 16 communities, and the purpose is to improve recycling in communities, and reduce the amount of toxic waste that is, that is disposed of inappropriately. Hingham pays $4,500 a year, which comes from our Public Works budget, to be part of this association. to be part of this association. Last year, we received twelve thousand dollars in recycling rebates from the association. So, pretty good. We also, uh, recently received a fifteen-thousand-dollar grant for our schools for a recycling program. So this is a, this is really, um, an effort to focus on recycling, and it's, it's an instance where a forty-five-hundred-dollar investment in the town is reaping financial benefits, as well as environmental benefits. Um, a que, the question asked about the emergency dispatch center, so just in, in contrast to that, you may recall a few years ago that Hingham, uh, worked with a few other communities to regionalize our dispatch center. And we are one of four member towns, the dispatch center is located here in town hall, and, uh, um, that has been a more expensive proposition than perhaps expected, I would say due to two things. It was, uh, there were some assertions that it would save money that maybe weren't necessarily borne out, but another consideration is that our, uh, the software that we were using as a town to manage our dispatch, uh, was actually in need of replacement. And so, uh, while the costs have gone up, had we not regionalized, we would have had a substantial investment that we would have to make. The good news here on the dispatch is that when we made that investment, we shared in the cost. The challenge to get the dispatch center, um, to be more cost-effective is to scale it and have a few other communities join it. Um, we have the space here in Hingham, we have the bandwidth to do it, um, but I would say, from attending a, a Mass Municipal Association meeting recently, um, uh, regionalization was a, a great idea for saving money a few years ago, but I think many communities' experience was that perhaps the benefits were a little overstated. Um, what I would say for Hingham is that one of the benefits of the dispatch center is that it gives our public safety department, uh, higher quality data on which to make decisions. So as we're contemplating fire stations and police staffing, we have much better data on which to make decisions, and that's a good thing. Um, town meeting will be asked to consider whether it wants to, uh, modify our bylaw to allow for electronic voting. Um, this came from a, the Government Study Committee, of which Eva Marx was a member. Uh, we need to modify the bylaw to try it out. Uh, the Electronic Voting Committee, uh, is also requesting twenty-five thousand dollars to potentially conduct a pilot. So if, if that is approved at next year's town meeting, uh, we'll try that out. Uh, town meeting will be asked to spend one-point-seven million dollars in community preservation funds on a variety of projects. Um, you may have heard a little bit about this next one, the noise bylaw. Hingham will be asked to adopt a noise bylaw, and one of the aspects of our hearing process is that, uh, as, as articles come before the town, there is an opportunity for citizen feedback to shape it, to work it. It takes a lot of time from a lot of dedicated folks, and, um, our noise bylaw has been modified since it was initially introduced to the town. Uh, Chief Perino feels like it is a tool that will be very helpful to him, and through the efforts and the hard work of the committee and the Police Department, some of the adverse impacts and unintended consequences have been managed. So tomorrow night, if you're interested, the Board of Selectmen are hearing this article. I think we take it up the week after. Um, and our zoning bylaw changes, I mentioned medical marijuana dispensaries. Um, there will be a modification to the zoning bylaw to allow body art facilities in the industrial park. Um, don't know that there's one planned, but, uh, this is a, a zoning change to basically allow, allow body art facilities to conform with, uh, zoning of, of some of our, uh, some of our other uses. And then, um, an affordable housing provision. A, as many of you know, uh, every community in Massachusetts has an affordable housing requirement, that ten percent of the housing stock, uh, I believe it's ten percent, but that, uh, we have a certain amount of affordable housing that we have to maintain. The state has very specific regulations about what, what it will count and what it will not count in a community. Um, you may remember that with Linden Pond, there has been an issue of whether the Linden Pond's units count. Another aspect of the state counting is that all of our affordable housing provisions have to comply with the state regulations, and if you're not in line with the state regulations, you may not be counted. So this zoning bylaw change is to make sure that our affordable housing provision complies with the state regulations, so that, as you see, projects going up on Beale Street, projects being considered on Main Street, the units that are designated as affordable will count. So that is a, that is a very important aspect to making sure our efforts toward affordable housing are being counted. Couple of resources that we would just mention, on the Hingham, Town of Hingham website, the events calendar lists all the hearing dates for boards and departments, um, and you can actually sign up and subscribe, so every Monday morning, you can receive a notice of all the different meetings for the week. On the Hingham website, the Advisory Committee has a page, and our warrant summary, which gives the timing and the status of warrant articles are listed, um, our, what we call our budget scorecard, which again lists budget hearing dates and budget votes, as well as a calendar of our meetings. I hate to say it, but, uh, we will probably be meeting three to four times a week for the next couple of weeks, so if you have a free night, chances are that you can, uh, come to an Advisory Committee meeting. Eva mentioned the Citizens Guide to Town Meeting, but that is also, uh, we have a link on our page to that, because obviously, it's an important part of our work, and, again, uh, we are so grateful to the League of Women Voters for, uh, helping keep town meeting top of mind, and working at ways to really engage the citizenry. When I first came to Hingham thirteen years ago, um, remember my husband, we were here a few months, and my husband said, "Got to go to town meeting tonight." And I, I grew up in upstate New York, and I said, "Town what?" He said, "Well, town meeting." And I said, "Well, what's that?" He said, "Well, we're gonna, we're gonna go to the school, and we're gonna make a lot of decisions." So I, you know, I, I kind of went along, not knowing what to expect. Um, and, uh, it wa, it was truly a very interesting experience, and a rich experience, and, um, what is striking about town meeting, for, for many who have attended, is that, um, a lot of really important decisions are made. And oftentimes, we don't unders, we, we don't realize that the town electorate, the town legislative body through town meeting, really has the ability to shape, uh, life here in Hingham, and shaping it for a long time to come. And, um, so it really is, it's, it's our future, it's our choices, it's our town. We thank you for your, for your interest in it. Um, at this point, I'll, I'll open it up for members of the audience who might have other questions. Sure. Kathy, and, they've asked us to have people come to the microphone, so...
It can, it can be uncovered, and you can just hand it around in your seat as well, if you'd like to do it that way, Seth.
Um, a question about how much money, um, the, uh, Water Company Acquisition Committee, how much they're going to be asking for? And a, a companion, um, question is, I understand there was a, um, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars transferred from the reserve fund to, for, I think for this purpose also, could you explain a little bit about what the one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand was for?
Sure.
And then, if you know, you know, how much they're asking for?
Uh, to, to answer the first question, um, the amount of the request associated with Article KK, which is the water, the water company acquisition study, uh, we have not been provided with a number yet. We actually are scheduled to hear that the week of March 11th. Um, the Board of Selectmen were originally scheduled to take that up tomorrow night. My understanding is that that has, that has been deferred as well, so we will get more information. But, uh, to answer Kathy's question, uh, two, I believe it was two weeks ago, or maybe last week, uh, the Advisory Committee, uh, voted, voted unanimously to approve a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar reserve fund transfer. Um, as many of you know, right now, uh, the town is engaged in some litigation to determine, uh, the purchase price for the water company. And, uh, that, that litigation is taking place in the Business Litigation Court, there is a court schedule, uh, there are expert, uh, expert witness reports that are being prepared, there are depositions that are being prepared for, which is driven by the court's schedule. The one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar request, which came from the Board of Selectmen, was requested to allow the work to continue up until town meeting. Um, at that time, we were told that another article would be presented as part of town meeting to, uh, to advance beyond that date, and, uh, a, as, as our hearings continue, uh, we will have more information as to the, uh, the specific amount being requested. Other questions? I think, I think, I think I'm going to get scolded if you don't come to the microphone.
No, no, sorry, sorry, sorry. Uh, do you know, do you know, uh, generally, uh, what the area is that they're expanding 43D District? Can you kind of generally describe it?
Yeah, so the, um, 43D District was, uh, this was an article that came before town meeting, I, I think it was two years ago, uh, which, which was, uh, going to allow for designated parts of town to, uh, be able to participate in a somewhat expedited permitting process. And at that time, there were a number of parcels in what's now called the South Shore Park, which had been called the Industrial Park, which is across, which is across Route Three on Derby Street. And, uh, when that district was first established, uh, it was established by address. And when you're doing those, when you're doing those designations, you can do it by address, or you can do it by parcel number. Typically, one address has one parcel number, but as was learned a little earlier this year, there were a few parcels that were not contained in the original, which was the intent, uh, because, uh, the address, I, I believe it was either a, a multiple address, or something with the address. So this is what the, uh, this is what's been referred to as a cleanup article, which is to request that a few properties that are located in the park, I believe it might, I, I can't remember the street name, uh, be reflected in it, which was the original intent when the 43D District was established a few years ago. Uh, but again, town meeting will, uh, town meeting will make that decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.